Well, this meeting, City Council to order here at Stafford County Annex, August 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay. Do you have any citizens' comments this evening? Consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, August 4th, 2020.
Submove second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 8, 18, 2020, in the amount of $103,622.69. Can I get a motion?
Submove second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion. For yes, one abstain. Okay, moving on. Department heads, can we hear anything from Jeff?
No.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns that Jamie can pass on to Jeff for the electrical department?
The only thing I got is I know that, as I was talking to Phil, you just might find out if Jeff has a timeline of moving the poles on West First Street. Because I know back when the county said they'd take over maintaining First Street, that the poles on the north side need to be moved off of the right, to the backside of the right of way. They're out west of town.
Like the ones they just put in?
Well, it would actually be everything from about where they put them in, back into town. Because if you look down First Street, looking west on the north side, the poles all come from about Gray Street, and they run out next to the road. And then once they get down there by that oil well and stuff, they come back in. They're on the backside of the, they need to be moved to the backside. We were supposed to do it about five years ago.
How many poles is it? I mean, it sounds like quite a project.
That's a lot. There's probably 10 to 15.
So they need to be moved to the north?
They need to be moved to the north side of the right of way. If you guys go look, if you just drive down West Street headed, or First Street headed west out of town, you'll just look at the power poles that came clear out, and they're a foot off of the, off the road to the north side.
Is the project on Northwest Street done?
Not that I'm aware of.
Alan, is there concrete out there?
No, but I've seen no.
The last report I got was that they had everything ready for the concrete slab, and I don't know that, that, I don't know that that's been done.
I haven't looked to pay attention to that, so I don't want to sit here and say, no, they haven't done their stuff, but I don't know. I haven't seen anything.
And someone on our land out there actually brought it to my attention that we might need to close the alley. Because when you get up to that service, I don't think you can go any further. Is that, that's the way they were explaining it to me?
Oh, you mean my place? Yeah, that concrete, oh, are you talking about, oh, pouring that concrete deal out there? I thought you were talking about in the street. No, there's no concrete poured back there on, by that utility pole yet, no. But they put the meter in the middle of the alley, so yeah, once you get halfway down, you can't go any further. But the support wire for the telephone pole and all of that's all right there in the middle of the alley. So no, you can't use that alley anymore.
Just for your information, I can start looking, I don't know the process of that, but I can start looking into that, if that's something that you guys would like to move forward on.
Because we're up to our property line. You know where that rock comes in off of Ninth Street? In the middle of the block there for that alley access? And then it goes around while everybody was using that still as a drive? So we blocked that off, but we're going to fence that along into ours, because that's just a private drive in there, not the, not the one going north. But once you get to my place, then you can't go any further or anything like that, because all that utility stuff's right there in the, in the middle of the alley.
So you're saying it dead ends now?
It did, it was dead in there, yeah, yeah, in the middle.
I know Kelch right there on the trailer house, they have to access the back carport. I'm like, I hate to close an alley.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you won't, you won't probably close it. You'll probably just close the north end of it. Because you still have to have, you still have to have utility right of way.
Yeah, but as far as closing the whole alley, I'm not okay with that.
Well, the whole alley never actually existed. It deadened the fence anyway.
Yeah.
It's not like it's through the alley.
Because that, that right there, where, because it would curve and drag through your property? Was it through it, or is that an easement?
No, 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 it's not an easement. It goes through it.
Yeah, people were just using it as, they were dragging through the property that he bought as part of the alley. That wasn't actually part of the alley.
But Mel still has his access back there to his garage too, so I mean, I don't.
I mean, the two houses that were there, they made the alley, so I mean.
Nobody else on the rest of that block is going to use it. Nobody has anything, and they have their front access. And you can't get back there anyways, but yeah, up to Mel, I mean, they still use that, so.
So the people that own the property to the east of you, across the alley to the east of you, are, there's no houses there? I'm trying to think.
Regal, Regal has a garage back there.
Yeah.
And then Will and Ger, that's his trailer house?
Yeah, they're, they're to the south, and they have that property on the south side of, of Regal's.
I would look at just closing it from the north of the pole that they put in. Close it north and just. There's no current residents. And I just leave this a utility right of way.
Because there's no access to that at all.
Right, I mean, we're not going to go anywhere. If you build a fence, they can't really go back there anyway.
I'd just leave it as is and not even mess with it.
The only other thing I had on the electoral department is out there, cornrows where that pole rotted off there. I was by there the other day. I don't, I don't know if we're, he was going to get us some prices on some metal poles, wasn't he?
I think so.
But it's drying up. It's not actually, we don't, would you inquire about that? He is right. The other two or three that were there look pretty terrible as well.
Yeah.
I mean, it definitely needs work done.
Anything else? Moving on to water department. Do you hear anything from Jason?
No.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for the water department?
Do you know, are they still waiting for manhole covers or whatever on Ninth Street?
I think that we have the manhole covers. I believe that everything has to be, I want to say it's dug out, but they have to concrete it in. Is that how that works? I believe that's what they're waiting on.
Can, can you pass a word along that if, you know, during your administrative report, I guess it would be nice if they put under their column what has been going on, if they're not going to be at meeting for sure?
Yeah, I mean, it's been empty for a couple meetings now. I noticed two.
But it'd be nice to, no, I think, I don't know if that's just my opinion, but I, I think that's the whole idea of the administrative report. Well, I just know like on that one on Ninth Street, that we were told a couple meetings ago that they had them in, but. Just to get a general idea of what's going on, because if not, then.
Well, we asked for a report and we're not meeting, and we haven't been meeting yet, so I think.
Jamie, make sure that the department heads try to put at least something on there for council, because we do need to see something on there, at least some type of progress, even if they're not making much progress. We do need to see and know what's going on, because we, we're not being informed. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Moving on, street department. Anything on that?
They have West Street complete, and they have been going and filling potholes.
I was there, we were going up and down on Fours the other day, and they mentioned.
Yeah, I think they're going east and west, and then they'll start north and south and, and go till they run out of oil, so.
So basically, everything's done, that was going to get sealed, basically, right?
Yeah, not, yeah. So, and I think he said, Phil today told him they were going to start after Labor Day, so, this evening.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns for the street department?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do they have a timeframe on Mansell for that?
I haven't heard about First coming in. I can check on that though.
I was just curious.
Anything else? Moving on, grant administrator. Have we heard anything from Lisa?
No.
I did, I did speak with Lisa here the other day, and she hasn't been coming to meetings, because really, there hasn't been anything that has popped into mind that we could be, that we could use. But if we do, please pass it on to Jamie, and we will, she said she'd be more than happy to look into it. And if you want her to show up at a meeting, just let Jamie know, and she can make the time to be here, so.
The only thing I had that doesn't really pertain to Lisa, did, you know, we had obligated to economic development for two lots. Do you know, did she ever get a grant for building houses on two lots?
I thought she did, but I will double check that. I'm under the impression that yes.
Be nice to know, because I've had some people inquiring about lots to possibly build on.
So maybe I'll ask her for an update, or maybe she can come to the next meeting?
An update would be fine.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. Police department, Chief Adams.
Dustin's doing well. Just talked to him today up at command school during lunch. Another good test week for him, so he's doing well. I think we're down to 11 weeks left for him. And we had yesterday afternoon, we had the inspection down there at the dog pound. State showed up, did their surprise inspection. And he said, looked great. The only thing we've got left to do is just get it painted. But other than that, we, we passed it, and he said it's probably one of the nicest kennels for small towns. So he said they did a good job on it, and it looks good.
Any guests?
No.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Adams?
Where was, NEMEX done with this part-time, right? This part-time school, wasn't that like a two-week deal?
Yeah, yeah, he's done. Yeah.
So he wants Dustin, he's done. Everybody's good to go, everybody's good to go.
Yeah. Dustin will graduate, October 30th is when he graduates, full-time academy. So he's enjoying it, learning a lot, so I'll have lunch with him again tomorrow when I'm up there for school. But other than that, he's, he's doing well, and Preston's done. Finishing up some training with him, and then he'll be out on his own, so. Other than that, we're doing well, so I think everything's going really well up there.
Anything else for the chief? Okay, moving on, fire chief, Chief Sanders.
The only thing I had is, I'd like to see us get a fire hydrant at the fire station. I've talked about it probably several years ago, and then several years before that, and I'd, it would help us out a lot, doing pump tests there and everything else, and just having one there. I mean, it's pretty common sense to have a fire hydrant at the fire station, so. I don't know your guys' thoughts on it?
What does that consist of, the water lines on the, on the north side of Fourth Street?
On the other side of, of Four.
So more in the street, putting a hydrant over there.
Couple of street out, too. I mean, I'm okay with it. I think it needs it, I mean, because right now trucks are tearing up that guy's property.
We've had some complaints over there before, so.
Especially when you dump that water in there, and the place is in plenty of mess, and you keep driving other trucks to kill them after the fire.
And when they pump test, we have to, I mean, we either block a street or we use that place, and that was what kind of caused the problem the first time.
What, where you got one at Mike?
Anywhere on the con, I mean, somewhere on the asphalt, or close to the asphalt. It doesn't, yeah, somewhere close to the building where nobody is, but that would be the best place. So we wouldn't block entrance for ambulance or anything like that, but somewhere where we could get out of the way, so.
But hire out, or do we have to do that?
I mean, obviously, you're going to have to, you're going to bore the fourth street, so you're going to have to hire, I mean, it's a street shut across there, which I think would be a typical deal, and then a hydrant, so.
What if we moved the use last time?
M and D, uh, face.
And maybe it's something we could wait till you had to have them here for a reason, and they could do that while they were doing something else, you know? I mean, I don't know how often you have to do that. I mean, it's not have, it doesn't have to be done now.
It'll likely cost me more to call them, whether, I mean, they're going to charge you whatever, whether they make a special trip or they're here to do something else. Yeah, the city guys can put hydrant in, tied into the main, they just need it bored, so, yeah.
I guess if they can get numbers by next meeting, isn't it? If they can get numbers by next meeting, what we're looking at, I guess, get with Jamie and Jason.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, everyone's a-okay with getting this done?
Well, they could probably help out, because they could also put a meter on it.
Right.
Yeah, because see, we're supposed to be metering off everything we use, but there's no way for us to do that. I mean, unless we carry meters around, but then we need basically meters for every truck.
Putting one in makes a lot of sense, so.
I would think, I mean, that cost is going to have to come from somewhere. What, you know, where, where does that come from? Is that something that's water and what fund? That's what I'm asking. I mean, obviously, it's probably not going to come from Mike's fire fund, right?
I mean, we could cover some of it, so. I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Pretty minimal every year. How about I get the numbers and, and sit down with Mike, and we can bring all of that to the table at the next meeting?
Okay, anybody have any more questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Sanders? Okay, moving on, city administrator, Jamie.
So I sent out Resolution 2020-05. I don't have a copy in paper, I'm sorry. It's basically the resolution regarding the spark funding with the county. It is upsetting a resolution stating that we are going to receive the funds, and we are going to use the funds appropriately, or else we pay them back, is basically what it says. So we just need to accept that resolution for the county, so we can be a part of the spark funding that we've put in for.
You know how much money it was?
It's not a lot. Josh and I kind of teamed up, and we're going to upgrade our technology in our office. You have a lot of trains and stuff for, by Zoom now. So we're going to upgrade equipment in the office and the PD, so we can get on our Zoom trains and try to get our, our website finally updated as it's been being used more, and just kind of make it a little bit more user-friendly with as much activity that has to be on there with updating everything. I think it's under $15,000, and I, you know, I just told Josh that I'd rather see that money go to the school if it can get the, the kids back to school, so. I just put in for what we needed. It's hard to, to put in COVID-related expenses for us, because we don't have a ton, so. I left it really unto them. I know he was going to reach out to a couple more entities, and we were, we had talked about, so. We have all of that turned in, from what I understand.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the resolution?
I'm assuming John had a hand in this?
Yeah, I sent, I did it and then sent it to him. Well, I did it, and then I sent it to him, but yes, right, John?
It is, it's just pretty much approved.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's no questions, comments, or concerns regarding Resolution number 2020-5, I entertain a motion to approve.
Submove second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so I need an invoice approved. We're a little bit over on the Dr. Rango, so I'm just going to get it approved. And then I ended up getting it yesterday before, or after we did the appropriations, and I wanted to get it paid. So I need it approved, and then I got to looking, and we're, we're a little bit over what we were approved. So once we approve that, then we'll be good on the full front, but.
What was the difference? Like, why was it more?
Um, we're about $1,100 over.
Well, did you add something, or was it?
No, we didn't add anything. It came out more than what, the hours of putting in the, $45 an hour, he had 24 hours in the bill by the time he put the heat alarm system in it, the watch guard system in it, and cage.
That was from the labor end of it?
Yeah, yeah, the majority of that, yeah, that's all pretty much the labor end, right there. We did take some other stuff out. I was actually waiting, I talked with Jamie today, I was waiting on that check. I was going to pay that out of that Pratt County money. So that's what I was waiting on, but yeah, majority of that, almost all of that is the, the labor bit, came out into about $1,000.
I gave him a hard time, because that's quite a bit of money.
It is. I mean, he did a, he does a good job, and you know, we, we do get a lot of service out of him, just like tonight coming up. There was some glitches with some radios, so he drove down from Russell tonight, and that's what we were doing before, that we get taken care of right there, so. But that, that heat alarm system, there's a lot to it. It took us a while to get that put in the last time, and so switching it over and putting in that new heat alarm for the dog, that takes a little bit of time. There's a lot of wiring to that, of hooking it up, because there's stuff in the doors to roll down the windows when it gets above a certain temperature. The sirens, the lights, everything's got to be hooked into that and all rewired up in it. So there's, there's quite a bit involved in that, just the heat alarm.
So do we need to approve that whole invoice?
I was just going to do it for the full amount, so then.
$1,995.40.
Yeah, and then when auditor, when they go back for the amount, it'll all be there?
You want to make a motion, Ross?
Make a motion to approve, approve, it doesn't have an invoice in it. Invoice for B&amp;B equipment out of Russell, Kansas, in the amount of $1,995.40.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Our nice thing about the budget for this year, though, is we should be able to transfer quite a bit out of our, our budget in, back into the emergency fund, because I, the way I'm projecting our budget, the end of this year, we should only be at about 85% spent on the budget, because I don't, we're not even close to 50%. We're getting ready to start September, and we're not even close to 50% spent on our budget, so. I think, you know, we're going to have quite a bit that we're going to be able to roll back over into that, too, so. And that was what my plan was, that's why we're kind of watching what we do now, so that we can have more to put back into that equipment reserve fund at the end of the year.
All right, anything else, Jamie?
I don't think so.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie, before we move on? Okay. City attorney, John, do you have anything?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, moving on to old business. Is there anything on old business that anyone would like to discuss?
Did you find out anything on that spin doctor?
Nothing more. I played phone tag for two days with the one person that said that they know more. They said we could go down and see it, but Jason's been too busy, so.
I noticed, I looked at it today, it's only $775.
We need to make time and send him down there and look at it.
We need to make time, send somebody down to look at it.
We don't have another meeting before the auction, right?
It's that day, I think.
It closes that morning, I think.
Because I, I think we need to tell Jamie what we're okay with spending on it, if it checks out now.
I think we can just have a quick meeting if we need to.
Well, why?
I think somebody needs to go look at it or, or something.
Well, Jason will be the one running it, I don't know.
Yeah.
He's the one who demoed the new one.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Especially if sending down there and look at it.
Boy, yeah, I just.
It's worth half.
I'm for sure, I think we're all in agreeance, that it needs to be checked out. I'm just saying, if we can tell her, if it checks out, everything works, how much we're okay with spending on it now?
What was the original price on the new?
Isn't it like 20?
Almost 25,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it, because I thought it was a mix. $23,000 or something.
I mean, the pictures on there, I mean, it looks clean, looks like it's been.
I don't understand, yeah, it's, it's so nice, I wonder why they're getting rid of it.
The guy that I talked to, you know, he said, he said that he doesn't know a ton about it, and that I could talk to the other guy, but I don't believe it was used. He didn't know if they didn't like it, or they just, it wasn't being used, so.
How big is city Augusta? Augusta.
Probably like good business, no problem.
Yeah, probably so.
$24,500 for a new one.
I mean, $15,000 fair enough, or not?
I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not looking.
You said 10 grand, didn't you?
I'll just, I'll just be honest with you, I don't want to get too crazy.
But don't you say it was 200?
$750.
And it's worth how much?
Yeah, they were $24,500.
Their own rotation.
Can you say it, Hunter?
I'd give $1,300 to people. I mean, I understand, it's, it may be worth, depending on form.
Yeah, I don't know, it just looks entirely too nice.
You've got a poor shop, rather not, just going to sit outside.
I think it's just a bigger fan on the bus than they think it was to use, and I bet you that's what it was.
That's what I think, too.
Yeah.
We need to go ahead and just make, have Jason make some time to go down there and check it out. Council, do you want to go ahead and maybe approve something tonight to, at least a limit?
Is that a good idea, if it's an option?
Well, I mean, the world lets you bid up to that, and if we don't get it, we don't get it.
I say we'll look at it first.
I've got a way to report on that, just first or fourth.
Follows, so we can just always have a special meeting if need be, so, okay. Any more discussion on that?
I'm probably going to on that.
Okay, is there anything else on old business anyone would like to discuss?
Did we ever find out, did the swimming pool have a leak under the concrete? Were we losing water, or we weren't losing water?
As far as I know, there's been no leak.
So we're just leaving that on there for the Warren Brothers?
To make sure that Stephanie's list gets taken care of.
Probably what I'm going to say.
Because I, yeah, I mean, she has a list, and it's going to be a good list. You know, once we get those numbers, I told her I'd like to see, I'd like to see everything that needs replaced. Everything that doesn't work, everything that needs a new cover, a new screw.
I just think that at some point in time, if we don't, we're going to end up like Stafford, have to put in new ones as close as. So if we need to.
And I'll get back, now that it's winding down with the season, I'll get back ahold of Warren Brothers and see when they're going to be in our area again to be able to go look at it.
Jamie, let me take it Stephanie hasn't reported any discrepancies or anything?
No, there's been a faucet. I know Ryan went and took care of a faucet one day. Jason was supposed to go look at another faucet, so. That's been the biggest.
All right, before we move on to new businesses, is there anything else need to discuss on old business?
Baseball field contract done?
So John and I really aren't sure what they're wanting, like different. I talked to Trey a little bit. We emailed Danton and never heard anything back. So I kind of reached out to Trey, and I think the biggest thing is just that they don't want it to be a thing where, you know, someone calls me and says, can I have my volleyball? And I say, oh, yeah, go dig, go dig the outfield out. So they, they, I think we're just kind of maybe wanting a little bit of control of who was going to be out there. So the work that they put in doesn't go away, but like I told him, I said, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you guys are out there, and we're not going to have anything out there, so.
Right. Yeah. None of that's in our current agreement.
Not that we can't use it, or other people can't use it. You know, I just kind of talked to Trey, like, you know, if someone comes to me, or someone comes to them, it's not like we aren't in good communication, where we can't work together and make sure that it's okay with both entities. I mean, the other thing would be if none of them are there, if I'm not around, so, but.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on to new business, new bid for truck bed.
The truck bed that I brought up at the last meeting, I got a two hundred dollar offer if you guys are okay with that.
Better than sitting there and resting. That's the old mosquito truck bed, is that what it was? Okay. Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
I think I need a motion probably for that.
I'd make a motion to accept the offer of two hundred dollars for the truck bed from Matt Fisher. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All right, next piece of new business is loader information.
So the loader information, I put together the Excel sheet in your packet. And then tonight you guys got copies of the quotes. We don't really have to discuss tonight unless you guys want to. You can look over the information and get any questions to me and I can pass those along to the sales reps. Yeah, I don't know.
So that one company, you've only got quotes from one company that's quoting several loaders?
No, I have three different companies. One has two quotes, one has three quotes, and one has one quote.
Closest, closest company that supplies beyond here. The closest one supplies Komatsu.
You haven't asked the guys how many hours we're on our loader?
Our loader has, I know this and I don't know why I know this.
He told us nine thousand.
Yeah, it was eight or nine thousand.
He told us last night.
What's your opinion, Ross, on fifteen thousand for trade-in?
I, I would, I guess if it was me, if I had a place, if we had a place to store it, I'd say the city should just keep it for fifteen thousand, but I know we don't. But I'd, I'd have her do sealed bids or check in on, put it on big iron. I don't know what their commissions are, but I'd seal bid it or put it on big iron. I wouldn't trade it in for that. It'll, it'll bring, somebody will want it for that. It's a nice, I mean, it's a little loader. It's thirty years old, but it'll bring that. I mean, I think. I wouldn't trade it in, no, it was mine.
I don't know what they're worth. I just know you're familiar with that kind of machinery.
No, I mean, it, it's not a huge value machine, but I think it, I mean, you can't, you can't get much for fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
We've got a mower we go to square with plus more than that.
Looks like the more you spend, the more trade-in would be again.
Something I thought of, Jamie, after the fact is on that, for instance, if we went with a new one on that five twenty-four L, is I'd like to ask if we got a high lift, what they call it, where it'll reach higher, what that option is and if that delays, you know, he has approximately lead time ninety days.
Right.
If that delays that and what that option costs.
Okay, I thought, I think that we just.
I'm not saying we need that, but it would be worth asking about. That would make the loader worth way more in twenty years when we get the next one. It's just something to think about, if we go with a new one.
And one, you know, one thing, I think that we went maybe with Berry Tractor before on a few things with the Komatsu. One thing that the John Deere guy pointed out was they're in Great Bend.
Doesn't know which dog.
Right, and just the, just along with the service calls, having someone and someone local, he said, worked, worked for them. So those were just a few of the pointers that he kind of talked about. The no death fluid, he really wanted me to talk about the two thirteen, the two thousand thirteen. I, if you guys don't know what that means, ask Ross. And it's made in the USA is one of his other bullet points. I think, oh, yeah, you guys got this, too.
The only one with no depth is the five twenty-four L, or K, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
What, what about funding for this?
So.
If, I mean, any of these options like the, just say the highest dollar. If we were to go with the highest dollar loader, what are we looking at?
I mean, I think we could probably put a pretty good down payment and then we would, I, I mean, I, I don't know that I want to see our cash go down by that much. John Deere Financial, he said he was gonna, he estimated about a certain percentage. And I can ask like S T M Bank and I think we've gone with, oh, what's that other bank we've used?
Sturman.
Sturman. So I can get a couple percentages from, if you guys are wanting to finance it. If not, I can, we can look and see what options are available in the budget, too. I just didn't look at that because I didn't know what direction that we wanted to go. I was just kind of providing the information.
Are you guys all feeling okay with the loader?
Ross knows more about loaders than I do. I mean.
Is that bad hours, I guess, for a loader?
No, you know, that's what I was, I mean, I think we need to upgrade some equipment. I wouldn't be surprised if that loader's the most used piece of equipment we have. I, I see it out constantly. But also I know we need dump trucks and I know we need a bucket truck. But I, I, I think we need to make a plan to be planning on upgrading all of them and this is probably gonna be the most costly other than maybe a bucket truck, depending on the route we go, I guess. But I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not against it. I, I, I'm totally impressed with how many bids you got and the options. I mean, that's plenty to pick from.
I burned a lot.
Something I did miss, where are the hours on this five twenty-four K? The two thousand thirteen, the U G U with no death fluid? Where are the hours on that? Where am I missing that?
Down at the bottom on the spreadsheet, it's two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven hours.
Mine doesn't say that.
Oh, yeah, twenty-three thirty-seven, I got you.
On the bottom, very bottom.
On the two thousand and thirteen, all the way to the left.
Jump up to that L or twenty more, less than twenty-four thousand is a brand new.
See, that's what, I was just really surprised, like, when he sat down with me, you know, I was like, okay. But then he showed the four forty-four L and just that, but even if, you know, just even the jump from the, to the, to the five twenty-four L is just, what, five thousand more dollars?
You'd definitely go, I mean, if it was my opinion, I would definitely go with the five twenty-four L.
With no trade-in?
With no trade-in, that's my opinion. I mean, it's way more loader than a four forty-four.
And then ask about the high lift and if that would.
I'd hate to buy a new one, I guess.
Yeah, I, I disagree, but also I'd rather buy a new one for a hundred and thirty-five than I would a five-year, or seven, gonna be eight-year-old one for a hundred and seventeen.
And that's the other thing is I kept.
That's a twenty-five hundred dollars a year depreciation.
And I kept trying to figure out if we should go just like that. I mean, ours is already twenty-five years old, so.
If you can make it last for twenty-five years, that's, that's pretty good.
And I don't know that that one was brand new when we, when we acquired it. Do you, I, I don't know why I want to think about.
I don't remember.
Ninety-five thousand.
Most of you guys sitting around the table.
We can think about it and you can check in on that high lift. We don't, I mean, that's a big decision.
Yeah.
I, I would like to talk to Jeff and Jason about, you know, what is the top priority versus a bucket truck or a dump truck. I, I do think our dump trucks need to be seriously looked at, but I don't think they're gonna cost a hundred and thirty-five thousand either, so.
Yeah.
And they're more used readily available. Finding a good used wheel loader is very, very hard. It's, that's the only arguing point to buying a new one.
You, for the down payment, can you think, can you quit that reserve?
What is, what are the comprehensive warranty?
I, I, I'm.
Is that powertrain?
I'm not gonna say construction deer yellow is different. I'm not gonna say. Salesman Luke's gonna have to go over that.
Yeah, I think it's, I want to say that it is.
I guess that'd be something else I'd, I mean, what comprehensive, I mean, what do they cover in there?
I will have a definite answer before I just.
Look on your two thousand thirteen bid on the back. I bet it has this, your basic warranty, extended warranty comprehensive, structural admission warranty, extended warranty, powertrain, and motorola. Must come factory with extended warranty comprehensive.
On the two thousand thirteen?
Yeah. That must be a little bit of their breakdown. There, there's no arguing Murphy's right up the road.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no arguing that.
Something else is, you know, we get into, I don't know, we're gonna start tearing some more houses down. It sure would come in any of that. So that to help out because the city is not prepared, but that's about it, so.
They use it all the time. I see that little Komatsu running all the time.
I'd always rather see us purchase a new one just for the simple fact that if we've got twenty-five years out of one, why can't we get with a new one? I mean, there's not, as, as far as deer goes, it's been a hundred thirty-two thousand or a hundred forty-nine thousand. A used one for a hundred thirty-two with no trade-in or a new one for a hundred forty-nine. I mean, seventeen thousand dollars and an eighty-four month warranty?
Yeah, I think what you're always new on for that.
Yeah. He had left it off when I wasn't in.
He upped it six inches versus the four-five.
Yeah, you got a retired size.
Ten inches more, eleven inches more lift.
I mean, that, that's just my thought process. I don't.
And wanted to work more, meaning there, of course, so. Check on the high lift, Jamie, and maybe those guys will be at the next meeting and we'll get it with them. Good job on getting all that fixed up.
Okay, have any more discussion on this? Okay, Jamie, you have more business?
No, sir.
All right, in that case, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.